We were just talking about that, there's a sign up for public comments. I'm staying with that. Alright, so no one else has signed up for public comments? Alright, so we'll move on to the next agenda. Additions, deletions, and approval agenda. One thing I'd like to add or change in the agenda, if it's okay with you, is for our council member to speak, we can move, suggest him move her up to the second item. Discussion after the one with William Smith. Okay?
Okay.
Any other suggestions? additions or deletions? Make sure we make that change and approve. Do you have a second? Thank you, Dr. Ellis. All in favor? Next agenda item is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Does it have a second?
Uh, yeah, do they have a second? Alright, we're on to number five, new business. First item is subdivision ordinance retention of existing vegetation. Discussing the discussion with Bill Smith.
Yes, I'll give a real quick introduction before I turn it over to Mr. Smith. Well, first thing I would like to acknowledge, Professor's appreciation for William Smith joining us tonight. He is an urban forester with Union County, and the village has been into a multi-jurisdiction contract to avail ourselves of his services. So, thank you again for being with us this evening. What I'd like to do very quickly is to provide a little bit of background and then I said turn it over to him. You all recall that we talked about this at the last meeting, and you would also recall that the, taking a look at our tree safe provisions in the ordinance was a priority at the recent advance of the council and community. And by way of background, the land use plan, which is kind of policy basis for ordinances, does contain some specific references to tree preservation and vegetation. It talks about protecting existing natural hardwoods, talks about preserving open space, and specifically with regard to trees in subdivisions near the view of thoroughfares and in non-residential development as well. So, it does undergird a lot of different policies in the land use plan. In the subdivision ordinance, the retention of existing vegetation is section 404.3, and there's several pages dealing with tree protection. Protecting the tree and vegetation cover, talks about whenever a subdivision required having a tree inventory done, there are specific percentage requirements for retaining existing natural canopy on site. It's on a scale depending on how heavily wood the site is initially. Section dealing with heritage trees, those trees that are larger and of particular importance to the appearance of the community and kind of the natural taste, if you will, of the community. There are replacement standards for those heritage trees if there are any that are damaged, and there are some protection requirements during construction for trees. There's also a list of acceptable vegetation, and that list is also repeated in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has a section on screening and landscaping, section 4.2. While the standards are similar to what you have in subdivision ordinance, the difference is that the zoning ordinance is going to trigger a buffer yard in different situations. For instance, when residential is adjacent to commercial or industrial use, or you have an open storage yard and you want to screen that view. So, it specifies that, some of the buffer yard standards. And as I mentioned, it does also have an acceptable list of vegetation that can be used. And some of the issues that I've come across, and I've heard you talk about and were raised at the event, there's kind of some big picture items and more specific things that I know I've experienced in administering the ordinance. In terms of big picture, there is, we have a balance between both canopy trees and heritage trees. And, you know, have we struck the right balance in that, in the way our ordinance is worded? Is our ordinance too restrictive as it limit development potential of property? You've heard a couple, some residents and realtors who approached the boards who have expressed concern along those lines. Conversely, we've also heard a lot of support for tree preservation by board members as well as members of the community. So, you know, I'd say, I'm not going to quantify that, but it's, we certainly have both sentiments present in the community, as you'd expect. There is also, as we've started to talk about the conservation subdivision, you of course start to talk about this probably in this meeting, and I know you've been talking about that for a couple of years, but one of those key provisions is, how do you define the basic lot upon which you determine how many lots your lot yield is? You know, you've got to have a base. And have we covered that adequately in the current ordinance? So, that's another kind of big picture. In terms of some of the details of the ordinance, right now there are, we have two different sections describing heritage trees in two different ways. One, one section talks about heritage trees being 15 inches in diameter at breast height. Another section talks about 20 inches diameter at breast height. And do we, do we need to distinguish, right now though, heritage tree is based simply upon site. Do we need to spend more time in placing greater values here on deciduous trees, hardwoods, as opposed to, say, evergreens or pines? And right now, many of the subdivision that you review, most recently Addington Crossing, several heritage trees were removed, and particularly with a heavily forested site, that's going to be pretty common. Right now, the ordinance doesn't really allow for the removal of those large heritage trees. And that's handled administratively, when along with a subdivision, you get a request for modification of the standards. Is that a good way of doing it? So that almost invariably you're going to have some modification along that. A better way being to say, if you do remove a tree through layout of your streets and lots, this is what you need to do. There's some remediation you need to do, certain number of trees and replacing and that sort of thing. So, that's more of an administrative approach, so. Anyway, so, that's, I'm going to be quiet and just listen and take notes. And again, Mrs. Smith, who is here with the Union County. Thank you.
This was, um, thank you Tim for the introduction. But I would also ask if you please will prenunciate while I would ask questions as well, because you're going to be helping us draft anything, so I think your knowledge will appreciate this as just as important as ours.
Okay. That's a whole lot of stuff to follow there, so I'll try. I think probably start with a broad brush and talk about what y'all have done in the past. So, in the past, you kind of sit down in about, what, 2003? Then you said, what does the village have? And what do we want? And then from that, you kind of came up with a system. You had a committee forum, and you went through what the citizens of Wesley Chapel wanted to see in their tree ordinance and wanted to see in the future when they step out the door and walk through your village. So, that was the first part. The first part is, what does the village have? So, the second thing you went to was, in that process, was what does the village want? What was that vision? What do you see when you walk out the door? And that's like percentage of trees that we talked about, diversity. Do you only want hardwoods, or do you want more diversity? Or even what size trees you want to protect? And then you set that to go. So, the goal became, you know, to came to the question of how does the village get what it wants? And that was through the process of planning, getting people together from opposite ends of the spectrum, and setting down kind of with a forest management plan or a, or a tree management plan for development. So, now, you've made cycle, and you're into the fourth thing, which the fourth thing is, is the village getting what it wants? Okay? And from what I'm hearing, you know, there's a whole lot of questions about what we have and what we're working with, and is this what we want? And we're 15 years down the road still working with the same ordinance, and development has changed quite a bit in that process. So, you know, now the trend is to go to smaller and smaller lots with more and more houses per acre, and then to allow variance in zoning to allow those smaller lots and more and more houses per acre, which also reduces the amount of green space that we end up with in the process. And that's happening all across this whole area. So, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at now. So, you know, the goal up through the village is stated is to kind of be a rural oriented community, and to try to keep things, you know, not as highly developed as it is in other parts of the county, and maybe a little bit larger lots and a few more trees when we walk out of the doors. So, in cycling back around, I think there's, there's things to go through in the ordinance, but I think probably the main thing we're looking at is, it's probably time to form a new committee and to start thinking about, what do we want? You know, what are we looking at in the future? How has development changed? And how can we get what we want? And, you know, and how do we, how do we approve our ordinance to do so? You know, so, in looking at the questions that Mr. Goss proposed, there's quite a few of them, so I'll run through some, and ask questions anywhere along the way I would have to try to answer. But we're, well, in the email I sent earlier, you stated three goals. Three goals were maintain low density, single-family residential character, to limit strip commercial development, and to promote attractive commercial development in harmony with low density, with the low density characteristics that the village wants. And to do so, we are trying, you are trying to protect the mature hardwoods. So, that's good, and that's a very, very good goal, and that will give you a lot of what you want. The issues that you're running into now come from both spectrums. You know, he stated, you've got realtors and brokers that are concerned that they're not putting down as many houses as they possibly can, highest and best use for property. And then you have other folks on the other end of the spectrum that think that there's too much development, it's too strong. So, so that's where I think we work through committee on common ground. So, I guess, other than addressing this, the items in the ordinance, do you have any questions about that process?
And have you looked at other towns and see how we compare to other towns as far as their tree safe ordinance and their subdivision ordinances with their, you know, retention of vegetation? Have you had a chance to do that?
Uh, well, I take care of the Union County ordinances and any other municipalities. So, I kind of have seen them and I see what you have. What you have is, is good. It probably doesn't need tweaking, but what you have as a base is good. You know, there's some other ideas that I would throw, probably throw out, I mean, you know, for, for, you know, the citizens to ponder on, you know, so that, but I, you know, but I think as far as a basic ordinance, it's, it's, it's okay. I mean, there, what I see is there, there are the discrepancy issue that you point about in, in the two places where you have heritage trees. Heritage trees. One of, it's, that's, when you're, and I read three or four times before it finally dawned on me of what I was looking at here. This is article four, and where it says heritage underneath, just when you get past the percentages with retention of canopy, it's heritage trees defined. And it says, for the purpose of this section, heritage trees shall be defined as trees having a 15 inch or greater diameter at breast height with at least 50% crown remaining. It says, first statement, for the purpose of this section, this section being the one immediately following priority retention areas. So, that pertains to priority retention areas which are endangered, threatened, candidate federal species, concerned, law-legal, golden eagle, experimental, proposed species or defined or has defined by US Fish and Wildlife. And then it's repairing, so it's a specific set, it's a specific land use set. And then once you get past that prior retention, priority retention areas, then you get to the protection of heritage trees. And then under that, it says, for this purpose of this section, heritage trees shall be defined as having 20 inches or greater diameter. So, this is what's outside of any priority replacement areas. So, and so there's two different, two different things. You know, it would probably be good if everything was all the same size. And then, you know, as I read through it, there's other things that I see, like paving and soil compaction. You have the drip line for within 12 feet of the tree trunk. That's probably not adequate. It's like a tree, roots of a tree can grow as much as three times the height. So, when you start looking at 12 feet, you have a pretty good sized tree. If it had like a, like a black gum may only have 20 foot spread. The same size diameter red oak might have a 60 foot spread. So, you know, you've got, going to the drip line, sometimes it's not, there's, and drip line is the canopy, like you were holding an umbrella, and where the furthest leaf could drop water. And on your, and I'm not, I'm trying not to pick flaws, but, you know, reading this, I can see a lot of things worth some tweaking. You have replacement of, replacement of trees and mitigation. You have, that you replace with a four inch tree. And if it's a large maturing tree, like a willow oak, you put in a four inch willow. If it's a small maturing tree, like a red bud, you put in a four inch red bud. You're not going to find a four inch red bud on the market. That's pretty well 10 or 12 or 15 or 14 tree. So, there's little things like that. And then the other thought I see is, larger trees are less successful. If you put larger trees in the ground, you have to take better care of them, especially irrigation through the first summer. Smaller trees are much, much more successful. So, you see a lot of two inch trees planted. If you know they're going to be in a place where you're going to have irrigation, then yes, you can go larger. If you don't, then you're way better off with smaller trees. And it's like the most economic tree to plant, instead of a 15 gallon container ground tree or a volume burlap tree, is actually a seven gallon tree. Because it establishes root, more natural roots more easily. And, and once it hits the roots out of the pot and they grow into the native soil, then they are, they're able to, to get the nutrients that they need through a better root system when you grow better. A seven inch gallon will pass a 15 inch, a 15 gallon pot in about five, six years. So, you know, the look is good, and you probably want to do something a little bit bigger than that in subdivision, but that's kind of, so big is not always better when you're, when you're doing trees. Well, there's, there's just, it's mostly small things that you're looking at that, just some kind of misogynary direction and things like that. Probably one of the biggest questions I would ask is, you have an ordinance, and this is kind of, kind of, you know, edge of an envelope question. You have an ordinance to protect trees, and you have percentages that you are working towards. I'm up here, I'll have a bit of time to page on. You have percentages. So, you know, when you look at percentages, it's based on existing tree canopy. What if you have a field and you're developing a field? What do you do with that? So, if you want to get really radical, you could think about something as not protecting trees. Requiring trees, as street trees, requiring trees as, like Waxahachie and Marvin, they require like four trees on a, on a 6,000 square foot lot, and then it gets to about, I think it's 20,000, they go up to six trees on a lot. So, you can acquire a certain number of trees for a lot, or you can acquire street trees, but in your whole development, it would be, the problem you have with municipal trees is you do mitigate them when someone takes one out. But what if you run out of space for mitigation? Well, you know, there's a lot of what is, and what if you have a developer that has a certain number of trees that is taken out, and he has to mitigate, say, 1,000 or 1,200 trees, and you only have space for 400? What do you do with their rest? In Marvin and Waxahachie, you have a payment lieu for trees, and, and the money goes into a fund to buy trees, but it also goes in, in the fund they have it set up to where they can actually purchase park land. So, you know, you could look at, instead of saving trees in the common areas and the buffers, just having conservation easement on those areas. And if you do nothing to them, they're going to grow back in trees anyway. So, the only thing is, you have to delineate and protect them as common conservation area and have that documented. And then, you know, if somebody takes out a tree, then you replace it. Or if it's thick enough, you really don't have to. Nature, you know, the old saying is, nature absorbs a vacuum. If you make a hole in the woods, something's going to grow back, you know? So, there's other ways to kind of look at that and simplify it for the development world by a great deal. You know, and that, and basically on something like that, you could look at, what's your clearing limits? You can do anything you want to inside the clearing limits. You got to put so many trees on the street, you have to put so many trees in the lots. But other than that, outside clearing limits, you don't set foot, that's conservation land, and you either can maintain it, well, you would maintain it because you, I think, if your ordinance requires a use for common open space for two-thirds of the area of some type of recreation or use. And so, you would, you know, but you would have a plan, you could use green lights or trails or, you know, or whatever you wanted really, but you would have something conserved rather than having to total focus on individual trees, because it is extremely hard to police and, and mitigate and keep up with individual trees. Technically, when you mitigate a tree that's in development, you're supposed to document that tree, you're supposed to keep up with that tree, and if somebody cuts it down later, you mitigate it again until eternity. That tree is set aside, and it's supposed to be on the face of the earth for eternity. The whole idea of your, have a boundary that you were maintaining that it would be individual trees, except in lots and except on roadways and on your street front. Marvin has a, a street front rule that I have yet to figure out how they come up with and on, and it sets everything back pretty far, you know, I think the minimums are, minimums like 135 feet on a lot of things. And, you know, it sets everything back off the main road, makes nice entrances into subdivisions and things like that. So, you know, that's another way that you should look at that. But you're at a point where you've kind of cycled through the first, you know, three processes, and you're standing looking at the fourth one, which is, let's start this all over again, let's look at what we've got, let's look at what we might can do, and, and, you know, see what the citizens of Wesley Chapel want. So, any questions?
As far as the, as far as other towns, you know, we do hear complaints from developers about our mitigation. We also hear from citizens that we need to protect the trees we have. I know when I spoke to you before, you said you're never going to please a developer.
It's a, it's a balance, you have both, you always have both ends of the spectrum. The idea is to find the middle ground.
But now, how about these other towns? Are their mitigation procedures kind of comfortable for ours? Or do they have less or more? Or how do we compare as far as?
They are, the county's probably the most lax, and Marvin is probably the most stringent. Everybody's building, Marvin probably built out in about five to seven, eight years. And, and people are flocking to them, and they have the most difficult ordinance with trees that there is. So...
So, we're somewhere in the middle?
You're somewhere in the middle. And, you know, the, you know, and it's, with the camp, with the county, it's, it's a lot, it's actually more simple. It really is. It does work until you get zoning variances, and then it just out of place. And that's the truth. And it's like in Charlotte, 2012, 13, Charlotte had a thing in newspaper that said, "We're not getting what we want." So, they were going through the process of, and they got, are we getting what we want? And actually, no. They didn't have the tree cover that they should have, and they did research through their system on what caused that. And they directly, I should have brought that article with me, they directly said, "The reason why we're not getting what we want is we allow too many variances on our zone." And so, that's the thing you have to do. Once you get it in place, you kind of have to protect. And it's like, you know, it's like, I'm working, you know, working with the county right now. If you have R40, which is one lot, one house per, per one acre. If you have R40 and you get variants, they're outside tree safe buffer is 40 on the back, 25 on the sides, 40 on the back. And that's for the whole block, it's not for each individual lot. There's another setback ordinance there. So, when you've got, when they go in and get variants, I've had a couple of them where some apartment aboard allows them to do like 25 on the front and five feet on the sides, you know, and maybe go five on the back, five feet on the sides. And you've got a tree that's growing there, and, you know, it could be on two different properties, you don't have enough room for that tree. And that's not, and so right now, we're finally getting where I think that maybe they'll, what would be the best to me would be to allow, if it's a R40, and you allow it to reduce down to a R4 or R6, which is what's happening now, then at least outside boundary should stay at R40, and then you should be able to scrunch them. And see, and see, even the whole concept of cluster subdivision, you know, cluster subdivision, when it first started off, you took, if you had some R40, you could put 40 units on that piece of property. You can scrunch them all up in one corner, but you only, you're only allowed to put... You can scrunch them all up in one corner, but you only, you're only allowed to put 40 units on that whole piece of property, the rest would be green space. That's kind of, you know, developers definitely are not going to like that, you know, because you're losing, it looks like you're losing on that. The idea behind cluster subdivision is you take all of the infrastructure, the roads, the pipes, you know, electrical wires and all that sort of stuff and you put them on smaller area and it costs less, less to do it. And then you have green space that you, that you allow.
Is that, is that conservation zone kind of basically what you're talking about?
It's similar. You know, but, you know, and so, that's kind of what you're looking at is that's kind of slipped down to, instead of doing the cluster, then they're just changing the zone. And then when you change the zone, you lose a whole lot of green space in the process. And so, that's kind of, so there's a whole lot of different ways that it's done in the county. And the thing is, each municipality sits down and decides what they want and then they put it on paper. And then the biggest thing is trying to maintain what you put on paper that you want. You know, and that's where if you write the ordinances to where it's simple, then you have less arguments. And if everything's real plain and simple to start with and you don't have confusion, then the developers, you know, are a little bit happier because they don't have a whole lot to argue against. You know, I mean, when you've got discrepancy or apparent discrepancy, then, you know, then that's where they can argue for change and allow the, the variances. The variances are what, is the biggest place where you're not going to, if you're allowing it. So, to address what you have spoken to me about, and that was the clear cutting of a large tract of land in your community. And it was done, I guess, a year, two, three ago and now you're faced with them coming to develop. If you don't have ordinances on the book that particularly, particularly address that issue, then you have no recourse. And it's the same way collecting money for, you know, mitigation trees. If you don't have a vehicle to where you can collect mitigation for trees, maybe there's extra trees that they would mitigate for free. So, there's a thing called the Right Practice Forestry Act and it was, mostly it was done by the forest industry. Came about probably in the early 2000s. But what it says is, and it mostly pertains to forestry, it does not pertain to farm. And it is if a, if a landowner has a valid forest management plan, active forest management plan, then they can grow trees for a fund of profit in your town and they can clear cut and they can plant the trees back and they can manage their forest land. But what happened on that one was somebody cleared it for farm. And I don't know anything that prohibits people from clearing for farm. You know, so I don't know what, other than putting some rules on your books, you know, you don't really have any way to. The other thing about the Right Practice Forestry Law is that if the person doing the clear cutting does not have a forest management plan and they clear anyway, which might be a problem, then they are mitigated. So, they, you know, they can't. And your penalty is you can withhold their development for three years and that's what your penalty is. If you tell them not to do it and they do it anyway, then they will, will be negligent and you can withhold their development for five years. And the problem with that is, most municipalities won't tax revenue and they're not really going to stop somebody from developing and they really probably don't, you know, I don't know, you know, developers would sue for something like that or not, but most of them, I've never seen a lot of forest, you know, I've been in the forest industry for 47 years and that's, but I've never seen a part of forest. And so, it's one of those things that allows that people growing trees as a crop can continue to grow trees as a crop. So, Stallings, Matthews probably have the strongest rules and regulations that pertain to that. And with Stallings, it's kind of like, if you want to cut timber, in Stallings, the best thing to do is to leave above the outside buffers. If it's R40, you leave outside R40 buffer, you clear cut the middle, because that's what happens to most tracts now anyway. They clear cut and they level and then they, and then they plant houses. So, there's everything that you can look at.
Stallings and Matthews and you?
Stallings and Matthews.
Those two.
Those two probably have the strongest, you know, that pertain to the Right Practice Forestry. I'll talk as long as you want to, but, you know, I think, I really think tonight is just to kick stuff. Yeah, you've been through the cycle. Yeah, you've got to the point where you need to make some decisions about what, you know, how do you go about this process? And any way I can help you in the process, I'd be glad to. I was telling Mr. Goss that I actually served on the Indian Trail Board in sometime about 2005 or '06 or something, they were the first one. And I think I still have the application. What they did was they sent out invitations and you filled out an application, which included why you want to serve on the street board. And so, it was pretty good, mainly because it's like you had to want to in order to, to, to serve on. And we actually have a pretty good committee that helped together through pretty much the whole process. And, you know, and so, that's kind of what I can probably dig that document up and, you know, start something like that. And as you know, y'all were paid a part of our pay now and so, I work for y'all and any way I can help y'all, you know, that's what I'm here to do.
Great. I think that overall purpose is, or Mr. Smith introduced himself to you all and for you to have an opportunity to offer comments or big picture questions or things that might be part of the agenda moving forward, to what kind of changes to look at for the ordinance.
You know, we, we need to come up with somebody else, so, you know, so that's kind of...
And Mr. Smith, as you said, is a gracious offer to kind of be an executive technical resource for our end movement. So, you agree? And I said, just knowing, having knowledge of other ordinances in the area like Stallings and, and that's, that's great information, that's a really pressed down amount of time and that is spent trying to chase down things and he was graciously helpful, kind of fit the objective of the community with words that are good, word is word in this, so that's really valuable.
Great.
I think, I think some of the big takeaway points really is, is I think, at least from my perspective, it's really good, good, some good points that we need to reevaluate what we have, what we want and already getting what we want. I think those are all great, you know, things to start with perhaps. And I know, as we, later on in our meeting today, we're going to talk about forming that subcommittee. So, I appreciate, yeah, if you could be a technical resource and help with that thing.
Fantastic.
All right, thanks. Any other, any questions for Mr. Smith? No? All right. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
This doesn't want to be talking fast, but I'd kind of like to see what you have.
Uh, talking about, did you just talk about this, right? And then later we'll talk about the subcommittee. Does it go along with that or is, I don't look sure what you asked for?
I've got a copy of some of the actual ordinance and I'd like to see us look at and consideration, so this is about the ordinance.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this would be fun.
Okay. I just wanted to update the board on a couple of things. I know we're looking to form a committee and I've talked with some folks that are interested. I've talked with Ms. Bailey, she said she's interested in serving here in our audience. Mr. Smith, obviously, Mr. Ortiz, and I've reached out to the developer who's good looking at our ordinance and he's also interested. And I know, I thought it would be good just to reach out to some folks and say, "If you're interested, you know, let us know because I'd like, we're looking at doing this." So, um, but I know this is going to be a long process, a very long process. It's going to take a while to, to work it all out. But our retention of existing vegetation ordinance has some teeth and I would really like to see the board consider adding an addendum to our ordinance. It's the general statute of North Carolina that restricts certain forestry activities. It's not changing our ordinance, it's just adding into, and I made a copy of it just to show you. It's just a consideration, you guys would just think about it and, and what I've done is I've copied, the top one is our ordinance, the bottom one is the state and I've even marked where I'd like to see it implanted. I mean, you know, just a possibility, I mean, I'm not saying, I'll just, you know, I'm saying, but, um, send everybody and then I'll go. So, it's just, the biggest thing is if someone, those are the arrows where I think we could probably put it. This is a subdivision ordinance, but also this needs, I think, could go in our, our zoning ordinance because this is the state, this is what the state says and it's, except I, you know, I would suggest that we say on the, on section Z in the back where it says the city should, basically where it says that we shall do this, we, instead of, we may, you know, request, you know, that the, it's exactly what Mr. Smith was talking about when he was, when he was mentioning the, um, having, if you willfully go against what you're, you know, what you've been told you can do or can't do, it can be held for, you know, five years if, if you do it, like, you know, it could be three years. I just, this, this state ordinance, basically all it does is it just says, it restricts certain forestry activities. It, it just kind of gives us some teeth and it's already, it's already on the books, it's already a state ordinance. And I'd just like to first reconsider adding it as an addendum to our existing subdivision and subdivision ordinance. Just food for thought, just putting it out there.
Well, when I looked at the forest management plan, I own 10 acres of land and I've already deeded it on the taxes as being a forest to harvest, right? So, I'm already paying a lower tax because it's agricultural land, so it has to be deeded that way, right? That's where the forest management plan would come in, if you had deeded the tax purposes in the county that you live in or the land is in, that's what you have to bear by. But if I just own 10 acres of land and it's timbered, heavily timbered, and I didn't put on the, the county tax map that this was forest land or agricultural land and I decided to come in and just clear cut those 10 acres, I'd be allowed to because I want it to be farmland now. I want to have sheep, calf, whatever. And I'd be legally allowed to do that because I've been paying the full tax on that 10 acres of land. So, there would be nothing to stop as a town ordinance or village ordinance or even the state law, when I looked into it, stopping the landowner from doing that, that's their land, right? When I came across about something else that happened up the road, that is legal, just like what happened up at Beulah Church. They own that land and they're allowed to clear the land. And then if they spend, so decide to sell that land to somebody else and they develop it, that's legal. That's just as it is, that's the law because they paid the full tax, correct? It's only, this only comes in when you have forest or the land is deemed to be a forest with low tax code.
Well, I, I don't have the same depth of, of knowledge that Mr. Smith does in this area, but I have worked with other ordinance that do have some penalty provisions for when there's clear cutting and, and there is a delay in being allowed to permit subsequent activity. But I think this is a good example of an issue that would be, be delved into to try to come up with something that is workable. And I think, you know, again, a good starting point is the town of Stallings and Matthews, as you suggested, if they've got something that's already on the books, I think that'd be a good way for us to look at that and then see if it works for us. Because I understand, I think that if, if they are, say, in a forestry management program, I think they can clear cut, but they're going to be liable for past taxes that, that they've been able to enjoy, the discounted amount. So, there's a financial hole that the state program has on property owners.
Well, I did speak with Mr. Smith about this and I asked him what he thought about adding this into our ordinance and he said that he thought it would be a good idea. I wish he hadn't left. But, but basically because it does, even though it's not, doesn't apply to everything, it, it sort of addresses when you willfully mislead and you say you're doing something for farming when actually you're not. There's got to be some sort of repercussions or something, we've got in the books that says, you know, you can't just clear cut land, that there has to be some, and, and I think Stallings and Matthews would be a good example to look at and see what they've got.
I think we looked at this specifically just about a year ago and we voted and went to council and council voted against it.
But which way?
Against putting this in our right of need to...
And I understand there was a tree clearing provision that went up to council and was denied at that point, so...
So, Mr. Smith wondered if doing this again is wasting his time.
We'd have to go to council now, I'd like to see it cut again.
No, you don't have a holding council.
This is a state, not a jury in effect throughout the state and the forest, North Carolina forest management is the one that keeps the records of the taxes on it. So, if you came in and clear cut it and you didn't reform them, they're the ones that put the penalty on you at the state level because they have the tax map, correct?
Well, again, I, I'm not that familiar with this particular piece of legislation. I do know that there are some legislation that are permissive and some that are mandatory and some that depend upon a trigger by the willing participation of a property owner. And so, I would, I know there's a financial penalty or hook that's tied to state law, you know, for retention of, recoupment of back taxes, but I, I, I couldn't really comment, I just, I just not, don't know enough.
But you do feel that if, if I had the 10 acres of land and I wanted, how much land I had, but if I knew that, if I knew this town has a tree saving ordinance, Tree Protection Act, I would just clear cut it, say I was going to farm it and then sell it to you and you don't want to have a farm, you want to build houses and that would be legal. I think that's what we're trying to, to, to somewhat slow down that getting around the rule part and...
Or at least give the trees back later by maybe requiring so many trees.
I do like the idea that he said that when you, it's been in other places in the United States that if you clear cut the land, we knew prior, how, I don't know if you could get onto some of the property, that they had heritage trees, that if they did cut down those trees because they wanted to make it farmland or whatever else, that they would have to pay a fee lude to the state for conservation environment and the state would then take that fee for buying other land for parkland, you see? Like, they, you clear cut that 10 acres, we think the tree, the tree value is this, you're going to pay that money and then it's going to go into a fund to buy other parkland for the people. That's how, that's how I see it.
Yeah, I know, because you're, you know, like I said, so many owners of the land outright. There's, if there, a lot of our ordinance is applied to development. If that person isn't a person who's developing, I think they have a little bit more freedom to just...
And this is the exact same conversation we have last year. I mean, to me, there's two things. One is, it's never happened. No one's ever cleared land and developed it prior to submitting subdivision ordinance that I know. I don't think there's ever, I don't know if anyone's actually developed the land that this would have applied to. Right. I don't know if this has ever applied. Secondly, we've already addressed this and voted, the Senate and council have voted. I don't know that there's, I don't know if there's a reason to continue to push it. I think the subcommittee is a good place to look at it and evaluate it and it's great. I'm just saying, my, my point of view is, we've already handed it off, voted, and it's never happened before.
Okay. Well, another thing, you know... Well, another thing you know, people say, well, if you have a tree, a land, a lot or land that has lots of trees, as opposed to a land that has no trees, which is one that's gonna be more, um, attractive to the developers. I think we should have a subdivision ordinance that requires X amount of trees, whether you have a clear, you know, no, no land. If we have a subdivision ordinance, as I said, if you have X number of houses, you have to have some trees around them. And that would, that would basically take care of people wanting to buy land as clear cut. If you've gotta put trees back anyway, it'd be easier just to save the trees and not cut them down and then have them replanted. And that's just, again, throwing things out there.
That's what Mr. Smith was saying, so a Marvin house, like six trees per, what it mandated so many trees in the playground.
But it has, remember that really wide step back?
Yeah, that's what, right.
They have each step back. So all the developments are ringing, you know, ringing.
You know, it's interesting, if you look at Ariel Labs in Wesley Chapel, go back as far as Ariel Labs can take you, this was all heavily forested, all of Wesley Chapel. I don't think there was any spot in Wesley Chapel that you couldn't walk through without a shed. I don't think so. But everything we see was, exactly, this piece of land you could see.
This piece of land was owned by the Neils, actually when you came out of the other part of Billy, Billy Hobbie, it was actually known as Lager's Road. There was a Lager's Road there.
So it's interesting that, you know, we're trying to maintain things, but everything here has been cleared up.
That's right.
Every single open road, house. So it is a bit of a contradiction, right? And it's probably, like I said, it's gonna be processes. My, my thought is, it probably isn't the time. If it was 2006 or so, the last time that we looked at this and utilized it, what happens?
Another thing Mr. Smith brought out when we were talking, he goes heritage trees, but there's also something called champion trees and specimen trees. It doesn't have to be heritage tree, uh, specimen tree, you can designate a tree as a specimen tree, which is an excellent example of that tree. And there's, this is actually a state designation. And a champion tree, which is like the largest of that species throughout the area, something like that. So, I mean, there are other ways to, if you're interested in doing that, which I thought was interesting.
You know, what I'm interested in here is, um, what, you know, and again, just defining it, I think we all know it, we're putting it on paper, is what are these trees that we're trying to save good for other business studies, right? And of course, we all think of those things. I think it's good to defend the reason we want to keep the trees to developers or landlords because evils or, you know...
Air quality.
Air quality, or, you know...
Shape.
All these things, right, exactly.
Color.
Right. So I just want, all these things are good reasons, and I think document, that makes sense, actually, right? Not just saying anything over 15 inches or 20 inches you gotta mitigate, it's, you gotta mitigate because we want to maintain these aspects of that tree cover for these trees in our village.
I really like, is the idea of having conservation easements in Lua, because there is, in a way, we, you can't stop some of the cutting because you have to cut the trees to put that house there, I mean, they have to cut something, right? But if we, if we start to eat, put in more conservation easements, perhaps they'll leave little chunks of, chunk of area.
We're actually allowing that now, but it's not in our, it's not specifically detailed in our ordinance, correct?
We can just keep it larger than the area.
What, what's the law we just, we did that for the last two subdivisions.
Adding and crossing, but I think it's, it's kind of part, it's all, we already have this tree camping save area, you know, this part of the table, and it's pretty well documented in there, so it's, I mean, it works really well as far as when you're, when you have a subdivision, and there's, and there is, there are pretty distinct trees on the site, there's a good amount of it after.
We're talking about tree mitigation, right? Instead of mitigating trees, you have extra tree space you can conserve, right? Once you document the, the density of trees there, utilize that method. We're just allowing that now, but I don't think it's ever been specifically detailed in our ordinance to be able to do that.
I think we should use the term clearing limits, clearing limits. We wouldn't want to have clearing limits spelled out in any of our ordinances.
I think you should make it, the diameter of the tree should just be 15 inches, and as you said, and a heritage, champion, plus specimen tree. And then, uh, reducing the diameter of the tree, the sapling, whatever you used to call it, from four to two, and then not to be the one down at Copperson Road, um, where we have to add 900 trees onto the property that will, I know, be the equivalent. Over, if you, if you had, say, if the forestry or the arborist was here and said, there's just, 800 trees is too much for this property at four inch diameter. If you made it down to two, then I'll pay in lieu, because we do have in lieu here, if you don't wish to have a clubhouse or a pool, or a menage, said that I will pay in lieu, say, 400 trees, the value of 400 trees, to the town for parkland or some sort of public development. That would be a better resource and also fit into conservation of the trees, right? The green space, you know, overkill the trees.
I think we're talking about things here, and I think, in my opinion, I think we ought to come back to this because, as you said, as we all, the tree save ordinance is gonna be something that's gonna take a lot of time. John, I agree with Deb. I, I know that we've, we've run it up the flagpole before, but I think that we've had some layering examples of, of clear cutting, basically. And I think that's probably, you know, there's a field within the community about that. And we've also had developers come in and say, hey, as a, as a, as a current landlord, they can clear this out. And, you know, they don't have any accountability whenever they sell it to the developer. I think, I think we need to address this, um, in, you know, in advance of getting deeply into the tree save ordinance. I think this is something we need to look at.
Now, I do remember we ran the flagpole because of those reasons.
Yeah.
And if those are still the same reasons, nothing's changed. We're just going back saying, we, we said, you know, we asked you to vote on this because of these reasons, you said no. Still the same reasons, why don't you vote on it again?
Can we ask him what reasons were given by the council last time?
Yeah, Mr. Coleman came here and expressed those exact reasons from that development that was clear cut. And he was the one that actually initiated this to come through planning board, Mr. Coleman, for that reason.
But we can give them this exact...
No, not this exact one. I'm saying for the reasons that he just said, for the clear cutting, developer saying I clear cut it, those are the reasons that we voted the senate to council.
This also...
But this isn't.
Could potentially cause people to look at their land and go, oh, I could do a forestry management. I could do forestry management here, you know, and keep it, you know, and not have to clear cut it.
Can I just make a motion and just see where it goes? I'll make a motion that we put this as an addendum to our ordinance, into our subdivision and zoning ordinance.
I'll second it, that's okay.
Let's just think about it and just see where it goes.
Any discussion?
Well, if I could, I think you're talking about a lot of details in dealing with trees, and I think they're on the verge of beginning a major rethink about their tree ordinance. And I think you might want to fold this in as part of the discussion rather than maybe making a motion at this point right now. I mean, typically your motion is, has staff input and background and, uh, and, and I know you've done some research, and I'm not trying to minimize that, but, um, there may be some other things that we could add to it or maybe package it differently so that it might be received a little bit differently at the council. I don't know, maybe they might consider it differently if it's in a package of a lot of other things. And I don't know, I wasn't here when it went up to the council before, so if it was, you know, by itself, or if it was part and parcel of a larger thing, set of, uh, issue dealing with the trees.
And my concern is it's just gonna take a long time to get this ordinance redone, and I'd kinda like to have something down that just kind of easily addresses it, that's all. That's what I was thinking.
I, I agree. I think there needs to be accountability. So you said the motion is literally taking, I don't know, you said this, this was four pages?
Just this part, just the, just the general statute, just this one part here.
You said one part here, can you be more descriptive?
Yeah, just this part, here.
Can you read the numbers from the record?
Section 160A dash four, five, eight, dash, is it five, correct?
The five.
Right? So all of that section, the all three pages?
That's just two.
And it would be from A, B, C, and that's the section page?
Yes, two pages and it's 14.
Go ahead, Joe.
I think what Deb wanted to do was really to do section C1. This is a, this is a statute that empowers a city to do things, and then we have to, and I think what she wants to say is that we may, and maybe you want to change that to shall, deny a building permit or refuse to approve a site or subdivision plan. And, and then it says for either a period of up to three years after completion of a timber harvest, blah, 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 or five years after the completion of a timber harvest, if the harvest results in removal of substantially all the trees. I'm not sure...
Just, well, just take it from C then, it's...
But, but you want to also just say clear cutting a timber, what is a timber harvest?
I'm sorry, second?
It, it refers to a timber harvest, and I'm just wondering whether that specifically relates to land that's under the, the timber program? I think it does need, need a little bit of massaging because it could be ordinance, but I think if you make a motion, you know, depending how you all vote on it, then we could take it to the attorney and get it written properly.
Okay, can I change the motion to say, uh, a motion that you take section C of the state statute and...
We'd have to...
Type the whole thing.
Resend the second and the mo... Do you want to rescind the second and the motion and hand it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we take the state statute 160A dash four, five, eight, dot five, C. And just this part where it talks about penalties for timber harvesting that's not done properly. And write it in such a way that we can put it into our subdivision ordinance and those zoning ordinance that it would at least give us a little bit of teeth.
So we're adopting that, adopting it into our state statute.
Yeah, it would be, it would be an addendum, just kind of adding new information rather than changing an existing subdivision. Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I want to make sure I understand the question. We're, we're saying that, that we're, we're putting this to Tim and to the attorney's hands to look at it and massage it, and then to bring it back to us to vote on it? Or we're asking them to massage it and to go ahead and add it in to our subdivision and zoning ordinance?
It will have to be approved by the council.
Yes, it has to come back to us.
Okay. But I, I guess what I'm asking is, is it coming back to us again before it goes to council?
Do you want it to?
Yes.
And would you like the staff to, to go along with it?
Yes, yes.
And what are you doing?
Good to do.
Deb, the motion, I mean, the, the, that may be the air of the motion already, but I would like for us to give it the due diligence of looking at it and making sure, as you said, Cheryl, that if there's any ambiguous words like timber harvest, we can identify those.
Excellent.
Should that be, should that be like a hundred percent timber harvest to, to trigger the...
Well, I just wanted to, to, um, to deal with basically clear cutting land and just taking down timber, just taking down, I mean, just something that would say you've got to, you can't just go in and...
And the next day the development's on going.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, one would be against this. Uh, one, I don't think this is stopping that whatsoever. Uh, two, we're gonna move into forming a subcommittee while we're trying to change the ordinance. So changing this ordinance is it coming back to us maybe next month? Maybe we vote on it, maybe we make some change to it. Maybe then it goes to council, maybe council, so we're talking months down the road that this ordinance might be changed, while you have a subcommittee looking at the current ordinance that's already pending for a change.
We're looking at other parts of it, all the parts of it, this is just one little part.
Well, this, this part is part that the subcommittee, what we're tasked as a subcommittee to do. So I think it takes away the reason for the subcommittee to be formed if we're already making suggestions changes.
I have a suggestion. Should we have this be reviewed, Tim, look at it, make a report, and that go back to the subcommittee instead of to us?
Absolutely. I think that's, again, that, that gives, to me, it gives the subcommittee a reason to be there.
There's a lot of reasons here. It's a lot of ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, you have a motion and a second.
Right.
Mr. Boyce, what do you feel?
I, I, I feel like this is so, um, so, um, specific, that I feel like that it's something that we could go ahead and write in now. And, and, you know, John, six months from now, whenever we have information coming back from the subcommittee, on the overall tree save ordinance, I mean, it's organic, you know?
This could be incorporated into it.
We can, we can work that into it. My, my fear is just that, that, um, we have, um, priority on our clear cut, um, the next day sell it to a developer, and, and then they found a loophole.
Which is the same, the council would go against, right?
Yeah, probably.
And so now it's, again, to me, it's just, why have a subcommittee if we're gonna make changes along the way, while the subcommittee is being formed and doing things? It's gonna be, I'm saying it's gonna be tough for a subcommittee, if what if in two months we see something else, specifically a small one, put in there, and we're not working with the subcommittee, we're kind of working over them, in front of them and behind them. I just don't see that. I like empowering the subcommittee, that's the whole reason for it. I mean, that's the whole reason to go out there, do all the research, bring it back, and, you know, you guys, you know, really kind of own it. If we're going ahead of them and, and doing stuff and it's changing while it's being reviewed, it's, to me, that's not the proper way to plan.
I, I think it's fine for us to take the information, have it reviewed, rewrite it properly, and then I think it should trail back to the subcommittee instead of us working on it, like, to add it or anything, to re-write this up now. But, and then you can have this piece and dovetail it into whatever information, um, comes into that committee to, to, you know, to tweak the ordinance.
My feeling is, my feeling is that's part of the council's gonna say the same thing. Bring in changes now, at the same time to, or inform the subcommittee to review and suggest changes.
And then that way, the subcommittee may be able to work more efficiently because all the information is coming into a central location. But I like, I mean, I like the concept of, you know, putting something to the ordinance that does address that issue.
All right, any other discussion? So the motion is to, I think we all understand the motion, is to send it to staff to rewrite the ordinance and bring it back, which we have suggested here, for us to review and vote on to send to council. That's the motion.
Is that fair enough?
Okay, all in favor? All right, all those? All right, Carrie's for them.
Keep this back.
All right, this one. Hold on, wait, hold on. All right, is that all of it?
Yes.
All right, next, uh, gen item is text amendments for signs.
Amanda.
I apologize. Missed my arrow. Next gen item is council member attendance. Uh, Amanda, welcome.
Welcome back.
So, uh, I think if you heard, I don't know if you talked to, I don't know if you heard when I talked with, uh...
You've talked to us. You've come to the podium? Sure.
Geez.
It's a lot of fun. I've sometimes been in the front, but you might come to the podium last time, and you liked the podium.
I might do, yes.
Yeah.
Want a chance?
Yeah, yeah. Walking like an opening.
So thank you for coming. Uh, the whole purpose to join us is for you to just openly discuss with us what you think we should be doing, how you see the village going, and hopefully for discussion back, for questions review, what you think, what we, the questions we have for you, what you think council. So please start, if you have any questions for us, or any suggestions or direction that you'd like to... that you'd like to see us work on.
Um, I just want to say thank you for your support and encouragement over the last several months, um, and for writing the letter. I hope, I know that there was never any formal response to your letter, but it was received and it was forwarded to, um, the new members of council. So, even though there wasn't a formal response, there was some behind the scenes, um, work done, including council, um, reviewing and editing their rules of procedure to add a few lines about respecting, um, committee members and, um, and council deciding to have planning board review your own rules of procedure. Because I think that there, a lot of our stuff, even the tree ordinance, you know, was written a long time ago, and little things have been changed here and there, and there might be some confusion about things. So, I think if you will take time and carefully review your rules of procedure, uh, I hope that will protect, um, each and every one of you when you are, um, serving the town. So, I think that that will be very helpful. I don't know what Tim, how Tim that has, how Tim has that on your to-do list or... But I think you can probably look at other towns and what they're doing as a good comparison.
Great. Actually, I thought Tim did, it's gonna be our next month's agenda.
I'm just, I'm, I'm very thankful and very proud of how hard I work. And not everybody understands it, um, but it's really appreciated by a lot of people, so thank you.
What do you see as the major issues facing the town? Either whether the council is dealing with now or the plan, but what do you think of the big ones that you're concerned about?
Well, obviously conservation is, subdivision is a real big one. And, you know, planning board spent a lot of time and effort interviewing on that. I learned a lot at the advance, and I think there were a lot of really good things brought up, including, you know, establishing an identity for Wesley Chapel. You know, developers don't go to Weddington and pull a lot of stuff that they know Weddington's just gonna say no to. So, I feel like if Wesley Chapel has its own identity, and we are known to stick to our rules and our ordinances and our zoning, um, one thing that came up at the advance was, why are we issuing so many variances? You know, if these are rules, why don't we stick to our rules? So, I think there's a lot of, we had a lot of community, um, involvement over the last several months, and I don't want to see that go away. So, the communications committee and, um, encouraging and increasing communication between council and planning board and residents, hopefully be a really good thing. So, I see, you know, making our, creating our, or clearly defining our identity, working on all of our ordinances that could use a little, I mean, that could use a little freshening up, and the tree save ordinance will be there, the tree save committee or whatever comes about, that'll be very important.
Here's some questions. I think we've been fighting on trying to how to communicate better with council as a planning board. Uh, you know, we recently had a, a motion that went to council where it was unanimous against a development, a zoning change, lands change. And I don't know if it was heard one, right? I mean, there was almost a tie. There was a tie, right? That would be, the tiebreaker, the council. And so now we're trying to figure out how do we communicate better, right? I mean, how is it that, you know, the large part of the community plus all the planning board could see that, you know, we did vote favor something? Yet council members apparently made up their minds already before we were going to have a chance to, you know, review it, discuss it, hear everything. And so we're talking about fill out a form, right? And have a form that says these people have voted, these are the reasons why, you know, you're going to see that come with our votes from now on. Is there anything else we can think of that we could do to help, help the communication? Because I'm not sure what's missing. You know, and even a lot of times with your council, well, who voted this, or why did they vote? Or, you know, I, I don't know that they're receiving what we're saying very well.
I wish I had a answer to that. It's one of the reasons that I'm here, because I felt like even three years ago, council was not listening to what the residents wanted. And their minds were already made up before we even had a chance to speak. So, all I can say is there's another election in two years. But we have, um, people who are willing to listen around. I don't know. Any advice about that is welcome. I think in some situations, people just have their minds made up, but I'm not sure.
Well, I think that's important, right? Any advice you'd give us to help us, right? Is, you know, please share, you know, with us, let us know how, what we gotta do to help. You know, it's one thing to say, all right, we, we vote, and it's five to zero, and then actually here, you know, Tim comes back and tells us, well, it didn't pass, or it was tied. What we miss is, you know, what, we spend a lot of time, you know, a lot of us will come to a pretty well-sold solution or conclusion, and then instantly, you know, it's, it's just enjoy it. That'll be a lot.
Well, hopefully, if we can get a few more council members for Tim, one or two of these a year, and kind of see your hard work and dedication and give it what's going on, maybe they'll spend more time reviewing your reports and everything given to them.
One other question I have, is there anything that you would like to see us work on over the next year, two years or so that, you know, whether it's a pet project, or whether it's something, you know, even something small that we can help maybe fill in any gaps, right? Or, is there anything extra than the, the big stuff where we gotta organize?
I mean, I think you've got a pretty full plate with reviewing your rules of procedure and the tree save ordinance. And I mean, if you want to slowly break down a little bit here and there, like a light meeting, take a section of the ordinances of the zoning ordinance or the subdivision ordinance and, you know, review the section at the time and just kind of, not only will it help you learn, but help us learn, and we'll make sure there's not any thing that needs to be edited or updated. Because there's several parts in our ordinances where it says one thing here and something different here.
And that's a theme I think we've seen from year to year, is we keep trying to repair it, there's always another, something else that needs to be fixed.
Do you, do you think the council would revisit that hawking, hawking or solicitation rule that, that came before council? That was, remember that? A hawking solicitation ordinance that did not pay, correct?
Right, and that, that really isn't a land use ordinance. Planning board is, is here to do land uses.
Yes.
But that really is not a...
Oh, yeah, land use, yes, that was just a question.
But that would be a council, huh?
I think that it's not a completely new council, but it is, you know, there are two, well, one veteran and one new member, and the dynamic is a little different. I've been accused of being set in my ways and only listening to one side, but I'm always willing to listen and consider, and things change over time. So, I don't think there's any reason to not bring stuff back if you want to. Not only do people change, but the situation around us changes all the time.
Like, did you propose traffic circle?
Yeah, I mean, DOT changes every day.
So, we have a million point five, what was it, one point five million dollars, haven't signed?
Right, I haven't, you look at my bank accounts for the extra million.
You know when to ask for it, right? You didn't even ask for that one.
Right.
I mean, traffic's a good thing, it's another point, right? And we've got this big road widening coming our way. It's a big exclamation point landing in Wesley Chapel.
But the traffic circle was never on any of the meetings I went to or any of the plans, and we just decided to come up with the Harris, what is that, the Tawga Traffic Circle? I don't even know what you've heard of it, but it was came out of the blue, right?
What I'm wondering, it's a big road widening that's coming, right? I mean, how's that gonna affect Wesley Chapel? You know, I mean, is it, I'm just wondering, I mean, it's hard, it's one thing to plan that this is what we want for Wesley Chapel, you know, this is what we wanted to, you know, to grow, it's another thing, DOT comes in and says, a big exclamation point on Wesley Chapel. So, I'm thinking about it, are we gonna react after it's done? You know, I don't, does that mean that we're gonna have a lot more commercial? Like Independence Boulevard that's, that's wanted, or?
Dear Lord, I have one.
I know, right? So, that's, you know, I think it's something we need to start thinking about a little more, both on council and the planning board, is this huge traffic exclamation point arrow sticking, they break your...
But how does that affect our planning board if we, we have these, let's say, our tree save ordinance or new tree save ordinance, so some came in, we asked for street trees, and then they widen the road, you don't expect someone to plant the tree right in front of the front door, do you? You know, I mean, that's, that's something obviously have to look at, and they may or may not put down sidewalks. We may or may not want sidewalks, but as part of our planning board for, uh, the Aston property, because apparently there's no sidewalks there now, correct? And then the churches would be affected, there's just so many things that would be affected.
That will be affected.
Will be affected, um, you know, and then it would also impact on our, just the signs, right? They're gonna redo the monument signs for these businesses, the churches, and would they fall, would they be grandfathered into the older? One that they had, would we ask them to take the newer one that may restrict? Go ahead.
I can address a couple of those things. Um, one sidewalks you mentioned. The town agreed a while back that we would participate with DOT in paying for the sidewalks, so there will be sidewalks along the portion of eighty-four that they're widening. We're paying twenty percent, and DOT's paying eighty percent. As far as signs, the shopping centers both have CUPs, so whatever is in the CUP that allowed the sign currently will, um, apply to whatever if they have to boot a sign. I haven't heard, in fact, I talked to Brian this morning, who is Aston, and he said he didn't really know yet how it was gonna be affected as far as like the Harris Teeter section.
I'm just wondering if the entire face, the character of Wesley Chapel's gonna change because of this. I mean, I think the potential's there for it to happen. And part of our job, planning board's planning for that, right? So, any, any, anything the council could help, pre-plan. Because we've seen developments go up still, we're seeing, you know, more commercial buildings being built right here next to us, and now it's big, road widening. It's a lot happening, because over the next, you know, twelve to twenty-four months, there's gonna be a lot going on with Wesley Chapel.
Well, I even talked to Fred about, um, when the reset change, well, the recent application to change the land use plan, like, I know there's not currently money for widen eighty-four from here to Potter, but what if there is one day, or what if, woo-hoo, I found, you know, an extra couple million? Like, that's something we need to consider along with some of our major thoroughfares is, what about setbacks, what about potential road widening?
And that, and that senior housing development still hasn't been built yet.
Right. And that could be impacted too, you know, like, it's going four legs through the bridge. They could lose their pretty interest way that we, you know, wanted them to have. So, that's something we definitely need to think about along all of our major thoroughfares. Because we're responsible, I mean, we're impacting Wesley Chapel, just not in two thousand and eighteen, but, you know, twenty-five, fifty years from now, the decisions we make could still have an impact.
You've served with the planning board quite dedicatedly and awesome service that you had. What's been your biggest aha as a council member now? What's been your biggest change or, when you've gone from the planning board to a council member? What's been the...
They have pastries.
Do you do that?
No.
We don't have pastries.
I don't know, it's been, it was, it was definitely, it was definitely, it was definitely several very rough months when, you know, your ethics are called into question and things are said about you that aren't true. People are even saying things about you that aren't true. So, you go from, you know, and you can't really defend yourself. So, what's great now is tonight, you can't get rid of me. You can't pick me up. No, it's, I have a lot to learn, um, but I'm willing to learn it and I'm willing to spend the time to do it. And I just wish that everyone was as dedicated. I don't know, it's hard, it's hard, it is hard. Learn something all the time. But I, I'm trying to do not what's best for me, but what's best for the people who voted for me. And I just want that constant reminder, and if I ever get on a line, my fellow planning board friends could help smack me back.
Well, you've been through a lot, and we appreciate how, you know, appreciate your service, your dedication, and all that was, that was.
We're putting a lot of work on that tree save ordinance and stuff. We thought the conservation stuff was bad.
All right, any other questions? From you?
Thank you all.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate this.
I'll be back.
Please, always invited.
Thank you all, seriously, for your support, your dedication, it means a lot.
Thank you. All right. Let's figure this right, our next gen item is the text amendment for signs?
Thank you. Y'all have gotten a little material from me for the opportunity to read over. This is all dealing with the twenty fifteen U.S. Supreme Court case, the Gilbert, Arizona versus Reed case. Common courtesy is the Gilbert case. Revision of the sign ordinance is needed to be compliant with this U.S. Supreme Court case. This, again, was another item that was specifically called out at the council advance a month or so ago. And with the, the gist of the Supreme Court ruling, it affects the, the term content neutrality. According to First Amendment, municipalities and governments cannot have ordinances that abridge freedom of speech. And sign ordinance is an element of speech. And up until this court case, the most municipalities and county governments have been operating on the assumption that sign ordinances had to be content neutrality, specifically with regard to the message. And this, uh, court case is, is a little bit, um, uh, difficult to, you know, to understand and, and a little trickier to apply in that it, it expands that content neutrality or the potential content, violation of content neutrality by municipalities when certain speakers or participants in the community are treated differently. For instance, if churches are treated differently than businesses. Example, um, in the Gilbert case, there was a church, Reed Church, which, um, there is a, certain rules for certain size signs and frequency off premises to where you can direct people to worship service on Sunday morning on the weekend. And there was a temporary sign provision, couldn't be there all week, but you could put them up for the Saturday before. Well, there's also provision for, um, real estate signs or political signs, and larger signs, longer duration, also temporary sign from it. The church wanted to keep the signs up longer, uh, and there was a, and the lawsuit initially was upheld through appeals court, but then the U.S. Supreme Court overturned it. So, there was, uh, the basis, I, basic idea was that you have to be very careful about treating any type of content of a sign differently. In this, in this sense, the content of the sign dealt with, the availability of a church activity versus the real estate activity or sale of, of property, uh, the location, the number, the form of the sign, they, they need to be treated the same, even though they had different functions or purposes of the sign. So, uh, what I've given you is not kind of a traditional text amendment, if you will, in terms of, I've gotten the text, I've, I've kind of raised a bunch of questions and read that you may have seen in your ordinances, and I, I've given that, sent that to the attorney to see which sections of the ordinance may be affected. It's, um, it's potentially a large number of, uh, sections that could be affected by this. So, uh, I've, I've had a chance to read over this, I'd be glad to discuss any specific comments or questions about that. I don't have any comments back from the attorney, I, I would like to certainly present those to you so that you'll have the benefit of, of the attorney's comments before you have a chance to really evaluate it and make a recommendation to the council. I think that's probably appropriate, or certainly if you feel comfy, go and vote on it anytime you like. So, I'd be glad if there's any questions you might have.
So, do you have an opinion on how these questions will be answered, that you've asked? Do you feel like you know the answer, or are you just sort of putting it out there? Are they showing the, the address?
Some of them I feel fairly confident about the direction of the ordinance, others I... Others I, I, I've just asked the question. I just don't know. I, I, as you can see, I've raised a lot of questions and I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything.
Well, my question was, we all know what the traditional real estate sign is that's posted on the side of the road that go out on a Friday night and leave on Sunday afternoon. Um, they're usually in the right of ways. Obviously, we can't make any decisions. We shouldn't make any decision on the political signs. That's already been done. But the one I see more popular is, I didn't really see it addressed, is the advertising flags or banners that a business might put up or someone might put up. And my question about that would be, being put in the right of way or somewhere with obstructing the vehicle's view when you come to an intersection or leaving out of a driveway intersection if they had placed so many. The only example I can give you is if I own a car dealership and I wind them a foot apart right down the road. You know, going into content neutrality, is it really a sign? In the fact of the dimensions, when it's a big feather banner or whatever they're called now. That's your admission with?
Yeah, that, that is considered a sign and the definition of sign is not really, well, there's one wording change. It's a difference in the definition of sign now. But those are, banners, a sign does not have to have words or, or copy. It can be a symbol. A lot of things that convey an idea or convey an association to another good product or service or organization, so, or event. So, uh, yeah, and you made a good point that what, in looking at the ordinance, there may be some other situations that we're just not addressing that really don't deal anything with a Supreme Court case. And if you'd like to include that now, now might be a good opportunity to bring that up if, if there are some glaring gaps in this.
Tim, I suppose I'm gonna ask, does the Gilbert case address residential uses or was it just strictly commercial uses for signs?
No, it's residential, yeah.
It did?
Well, the nature of the signs were posted in residential areas. So first of all, a good example, uh, you know, the, the political signs in our jurisdiction in Riwaire, you know, the, the state DOT has issued guidelines that really trump all local ordinances dealing with that. So they do allow that. Well, according to Gilbert, should you, what, should not only Riwa, not a political sign in Riwaire, but what about yard sales? What about grand opening sales? What about any other type of signage in that, in order for the state to avoid also violating the terms of compliance with Gilbert? And I've seen that in a, raised by a number of jurisdictions in North Carolina. So that's one, a key area that I'd like to get an opinion from our attorney. If you like, you know, it, this gets very technical very quickly and it may be helpful to, to hold off and until I get something back from the attorney and that might shed some light and you'll have more specific amendment wording, you know, that, that'd be helpful discussion. But just, this is, nothing else is kind of primary, first cut of this stuff. I find it's always helpful to have two or three swipes of this by the second or third time you start us now. Oh, that's what it's all about, so.
Question, have you had any, um, has anyone come forth with requests for signs that were not allowed? Or been, um, or had fit signs down? Or was there something we're listening to that the public just wants?
Well, my colleague Susan will, uh, is tasked with making a sign sweep period, or at least on a monthly basis. Cheryl, that accurate and chill. There are invariably some signs that are placed off premises, you know, real estate signs left up, grand opening signs that are put up someplace. I, I, Cheryl and I talked about a couple of political signs that had been posted that really were obstructions at exit points of shopping centers in a couple of situations. So the ordinance authorizes us to remove those signs in those situations if there's a traffic or a public safety hazard.
Anything else dealing with churches or private residents, anything like that?
No, I think, no, not really.
Requested or?
The one kind of signs I, over the years, of course, people would like to have off premise signs. And we would like to, anybody who has a, a house that, along eighty-four, that'd like to have signs that say, "That way to Heritage and that way to Epcun," you know, that kind of thing. And, um, and of course with banners, people would like to have huge banners advertising an event or something. And one of the political signs, um, I, I got the deputy and he got them to move it or whatever. It was just, you can't, you can't, like Mike says, you can't obstruct the vision of traffic.
And just for the record, Mike, uh, those weekend residential signs are not allowed in our ordinance. But evidently there, Cheryl told me there's a, there's someone who does put them out on Friday and takes them up on Sunday. And we don't have staff to really observe these things off the weekends.
They kind of slide by because, you know, we have a long, we have, you know, thirteen pages here, a sign ordinance. You know, maybe it could be completely rewritten and be very short. In some places they just go, you know, a residence can have two signs up to two by three feet. You know, and, and other things to make it, we have all these ifs, ands, and buts here.
Temporary signs, temporary signs. It's a sign that I have a question on when it says, the solicitation of, a solicitation sign. I want my properties to sell, for sale, right? But as the sign says, "We buy houses," or "I'll fix your car," or "Are you looking for work?" You, you see this, this, they're using it as a form of advertisement to solicit business from you. They're not trying to sell their property or their car. They're, it's the, it's the solicitation of their business. Like Bob's exterminating, right, all over the place. You need to have that because then it doesn't afford them to as a form of literacy, right? Do you understand?
But those are the people that never get a permit, so those are all those buildings.
I know.
And the ordinance does have, like, provisions for people who operate businesses out of their home, home occupation. And they're allowed legally, you know, one small sign on premises, but if you can't.
Is that, just to sort of be a devil's advocate, is it, you know, should you just say, you know, three signs per a residence? Whether you want it to say "Weddington Senior" or "For Sale Sign" or "The Dog Bites." As opposed to, are you being favorable to somebody as a business on, you know, those questions?
That could be a logical extension of this decision is that you can have a twelve by, twelve inch square sign that says, "Accountant Services, Hair Braiding Services." "I don't like you" signs.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
You start opening up a lot of things if you're really a content people.
As we saw when I was reading it, is the difference when you saw the property sign was fresh eggs are honey, right? As a sign selling in produce, I mean, you're allowed, but if I block my car beside the road, if I have road furniture, I block my car. If what I put the sign in there, is that considered a sign? When I put it in the window on three sides of the car, for sale of the car? Or I just take the big white marker and write "For Sale" on the windshield of the cars? Is that still considered to be a sign?
And I've seen that in somebody else's ordinance because, and I think maybe one time when there was a political election, you know, you take a, you know, a huge trailer truck and you make it a political sign. I mean, that's a sign as much as anything.
Those are, and I don't know about our ordinance. I know those are specifically prohibited in a lot of jurisdictions.
Like by number and size is about the way you could do it.
So you said the whole reason to start driving, diving into this was because of the content neutrality. But we wanna establish the look to it a lot. So, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense to make sure, number one, purposely address that one. All right, make sure we have content neutrality charts. We don't get, we don't get sued as a, as a town. Uh, then secondly, part of the second priority is review anything that stands out, that doesn't make sense. Don't touch base on, that makes sense? Is that what you guys? So you're gonna, so we're still waiting to go to George, our attorney, and he reviewed your suggestions for content neutrality? Has he also reviewed the other suggestions that we had? Is that right?
The ordinances?
No, no, I mean, in this sign ordinance, you have a lot of questions.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
That are not content neutrality driven, but okay.
I mean, things are just policy oriented. There's, you know, there's not a real legal question. And I mean, he can comment, but it's more or less, there's some other decision that you and the council, that's your purview.
All right. What do you guys think about, uh, until next month, till we hear back from George?
Yes.
Sound good to you, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Tim. Should we move on to the next agenda item?
Sure.
Land use plan amendment process. Just for discussion.
Yes, again, discussion purposes, another advance item from the retreat. Advance, excuse me, that's redundant, so. Uh, but this is all fresh in everybody's mind, of course. And, uh, the recent land use plan amendment process, uh, made it through. It wasn't the best, the prettiest at times, but it made it through. And so there's a lot of discussion now about, oh, should we really rethink this, re-imagine it? And as I, you've heard me say a number of times, that the land use plan amendment process isn't written down anywhere. It's not written in state statutes, it's not in local ordinance. As opposed to changing the zoning text or map, which is in state statute, is in local ordinance. So do we wanna have something in our ordinances? Do we wanna dovetail the processes so that land use plan amendments mirror a, the rezoning process for ease of recognition by citizens, by developers, by boards? So that we're not having to re, you know, think about, where am I today and how do I deal with this issue? Because it's of a particular use. Outlined in the memo here about some of the issues, some of the similarities, some of the differences between the two processes. And last thing I'll say before I'll turn it over to you or offer discussion questions is that there are some timing issues as well as some substance issues. So, you know, the timing, for instance, the land use plan amendment requires, as we've had by precedent, a community meeting. Most of the rezoning text amendments don't have that community meeting. And you'll recall that with the land use plan amendment process, you saw it on the very first end and then you didn't get to see it again after many months in the process. Another thing that you might, all might want to think about is that in, in some jurisdictions for rezoning and for land use plan amendments, the planning board conducts a, a noticed public hearing. So that, you know, that you meet after signs are posted and letters that, that add to the expense and time of the process and we may not wanna do that. But that's, that's just another thing to think about. The other thing about the substances is that you'll recall that during the process of land use plan amendment, the applicant spoke about a lot of specific uses. And none of those were lea, well, I won't say legal, there, there's no commitment, legal commitment to that. And with general zoning, there, that's just a real vote. You just don't do that because obviously you get general zoning, you can do any array of that. Well, that's the same thing with land use plan amendment. Although it's, the law and tradition are not as strong with the land use plan amendment process. But again, if you wanted to codify that process, that'd be something you could, you could address directly through that. Oh, the other thing is, uh, for zoning now, if you, if it's turned down, then there's a waiting period before the property can come back. You don't have that in land use plan amendment. So that, that might be something to think about and codify in some way as well. This is kind of the first step. If you wanna talk about it, if you want me to develop an ordinance language, or if you want to just kind of hash it over tonight, hash it over again, we can, we can do that. It's not really time sensitive.
This is the planning clarity. On page two of your memo, down there at the bottom, there's, uh, bullets. One that begins, "Village Council to call for public hearing action, January eighth." Was that supposed to be eighteen or is that seventeen? Are those last three ones, are those supposed to be?
I'm sure, yeah, those should be eighteen, sorry. Everybody needs a good editor. I didn't have one.
That's what I did for the, I mean.
I have one, one thing that I noticed, right, in the last land use plan, uh, application is that the applicant changed along the way. So we, planning board saw an application, went through it, voted on it, and subsequently the applicant said, well, you know what? Not these properties. Instead, I just want these properties, right? And it reduced, so there was a change. And honestly, that, that kind of worried me that he was allowed to go through without saying, wait a second, change your application. Now it's going to council with the recommendation from the planning board that was based on a different application, right? So I would like to throw in there that, you know, specifically if there's any changes along the way, that it has to come back to the planning board at some, some point along the process. Whether it's before or after, that any changes have to come back to the planning board, yes?
He was not presenting, he, he never should have been allowed to present a plan. He was asking for changing the land use plan. Whether he owed you, you know, a merry-go-round and cotton candy. He could have turned around and made it, you know, a butcher, you know, it could be anything.
But his text, but the text amendment, that the text change that he asked for was specific to lots and parcel numbers. And then he came back to change that and said not including those parcel numbers.
He didn't even change that, but I mean, his uses.
Right, it could have been anything.
Were just fancy.
But that's the simple, I was looking at was the change, you know, no longer the pond. Wait a second, pond was an integral part of land use plan and now it's not, right? But what we recommended, what we saw, right? And I hate for maybe, you know, planning board to recommend something and then they change it and remove something that was integral to our decision, right? And then it goes to council and they respect our opinion and it's, it had changed.
Okay, that's a really good point. But that, his changes in terms of the uses and the sides were discussed verbally in the meetings, but were never formally, uh, changed in the application that I received. There's no, there's no communication directly with staff that, oh, my application is changed. And so that, that contributes to part of the confusion of the whole discussion. That's, that is part of talking about specific uses, the change, and then it's, it was just, I'll use the word sloppy in terms of the process that went through and fought with being proposed on the table at any particular time. I know it, it generated a lot of confusion to folks in the, in the public, which is unfortunate, which is kind of contrary. And I, and I felt bad about that because I, you know, we really, staff were trying to shepherd the process and make it a valid, transparent process and, uh, so.
Well, that's what, that's what the elements in the process is if there's a change along the way, for it to come back from the board. Before it goes to the final, at least before it goes to final council, for that reason. And then the other thing you said, uh, I think makes sense, right? If, um, if they, if they get a no on the vote for land use plan, right? That they can't come back for a certain amount of time. You had mentioned properties. Those properties can't come back for a certain time, right? Land use plan in Texas, it always ties to property, not always. It typically do. So it may not be best to specify those properties can't come back. I don't know what the right wording would be, but, you know, may, you know, the same application cannot come back? I don't know what the right.
Well, the way, the way the zoning works, usually what they have is that.
Zoning's tied to properties.
Yeah, if, if it says zoning is denied for a property, then usually there's one year before any kind of zoning can come back and two or three years till the same zoning is proposed, so.
Isn't it usually tied to a property?
Yes, yes, yes. But you, I mean, you know, there's no, there's no limit to when like a zoning text amendment can come back. You know, that's, because it doesn't affect a particular property.
Do you have any idea why in the current land use plan, the planning board does not, according to the rules that are specified there, have the opportunity to consider the request after the community meeting? There was no spec, there was no thing in there about it would come back to us for, for decision, right? It was just gonna come before us, we would discuss it and then we have a public meeting and then we wouldn't get to vote on it. What, how, where did that come from?
It was just the precedent. That was the way the process happened the first time in two thousand and sixteen. And that's, and that was how we were doing it, yeah.
That's bizarre. And we didn't follow that, but I'm glad we didn't. And we didn't follow that, but I'm glad we didn't.
Should we set a timeline that planning board has to review it? Right, like 60 days or...
You can make it similar to the zoning case too, without trying to make, I mean, there may be some legitimate reasons why you wanna differentiate between the two processes, but from a staff perspective, and from, you know, the development community, from citizens, I think if you can make the processes similar as much as possible, still have a fair process, then I think that's a good thing. When you start having differentiating details and things, it's easy to slip up and it gets confusing. And that, that's general, it's not to say we might not wanna have some significant differences.
'Cause I see, you know, the developer, landlord, or anybody, go straight to a zoning change, you're saying, without the land use plan change. So, I think the idea is, let's make it relatively attractive and cooperative for the developer or landlord, and say, "You know what, let me go try and do land use plan text change first, before I go to zoning." If we make it too difficult, and too expensive, and too much to go to land use plan, the developers are starting to do that, so we go straight to zoning change.
But I think you have to have the difference between zoning and land use, because the land use is the overall strategic or long-term vision of your community. I would, I personally would hate to be put on the spot, and you have to make a decision in 60 days on the land use plan that would affect this community for the next 10 years. You see what I mean?
Good point.
I, I mean, because we're, we're talking about changing something that's residential and making it commercial, or we're willing to split between commercial and residential, 'cause that's a new buzzword now, mixed use, right? It's something that would come down the road and affect our community. It may be a benefit today, but like the road changing, or the, the outlining of the demographics of the community, where people are moving to, or businesses going to. I mean, you could make downtown Wesley Chapel Potter Road South, it's still in our, it's still in our village, and build a shopping complex there in the middle of that field. If, if, you, you see what I mean?
No, I see.
I would, I would, I would hate to have this planning board, or anyone in the future, be, be held to six, like a 60-day rule that would, I know we wanna simplify, but would, would, would not be beneficial to get more facts.
What should we...
What?
Should we, you suggest?
Well, I think because it, it is, there's a greater value to the land use plan or the text amendment, that if, if, if 60 days is for, you know, zoning, I think, to be fair to everyone, 120 days, you know, four months, I think in four months, you could get the, the feedback from the community, but let's also not be the type of people that, just because the oppose, someone opposes it today for a land use plan, they might have a personal agenda, and in that 60 days, they could pull the wool over someone's eye, to lack of a better word, to get their will, when they're the small minority, and maybe other people do wanna change, you see what I mean? I, I don't wanna be popular, I don't want it to be a popularity contest when it comes to the land use plan. It, it's gotta be right down, fair to everybody, so 120 days might be fair. I don't wanna drear it out for six months, you see what I mean? I don't think, I don't think that's reasonable for a developer, with somebody looking to invest in a, a big project.
I'm thinking, I mean, this would also apply to, is it Mr. Horn, with the property in the corner there? I don't know. Right, he said, you know, "I can't own my property, can I change the land use plan?" Now, now, this word's got out, say, you know, "Before you can cross it for sale, I understand what, talking about changing land use plan." It could be 120 days for the planning board, then, you know, you go down this list, all these other things. Or you just go straight to a zoning change request. And for him, he may say, "Well, you know what, if it's faster to go to a zoning change request, and I'll know the answer, I'll just go straight to a zoning change request."
Okay.
And so, I'm saying, that's, that's the...
But for the land use plan, because it affects this, this, this community for, for years to come, as the property's, if, if you make it 120 days, I think that's fair for the, for the community to get the information that they need, just for example, I'm saying it has to be done, and to give a timeline for a developer to line up their money, and to do whatever they have to do to develop that property, and a fairness that, you know, that they don't have to wait a year to come to a land use plan. There might, there might be a benefit, there may be a benefit to the village to turn that land commercial, because, I don't know, Google's coming, just an example. You, you see, you see what I mean? I don't wanna, but, but I don't like the fact that we would put ourselves in the same basket with zoning, that by those rules in 60 days, you have to make a decision, and it has to go to council. I think you'd need a little bit more time to, to, to find out where you wanna put the, let's be honest, the high-density housing, the senior housing, or, or apartments, if they, that comes to word now. That you give people time to, you know, boil, get the blood boiling, whatever it is, to get the passion out, and then look at the facts, and make a decision that is beneficial to the village. What's, what land use plan for, what's beneficial to the village, to the people?
Yeah, you convinced me, I think you're right, I think you're right on point. Although, the, you know, the flip side is, someone can't go straight to zoning and get the...
Yeah, you can, because, but that's already on the books with the state, exactly. That's, that's what the state says, that's the law says.
I mean, it's, it's a good conversation, but I think two things real quickly. I think there's a balance between, this is a public decision, so there is a tendency slowing things down, and that's what local democracy does. And you realize, as you're, you're talking about, these are important decisions, and so, there's a legitimate reason why you kind of slow things down. And it's not, I'm not trying to, you know, impute that motive or to a development, or developer, but, and there's usually gonna be inherent conflict on the speed and all that stuff, I get that, but... But I think it's, it's important to have that public dialogue, and so, that occurs in a reasonable way. Having said that, you don't want it to go too long, to where it's gonna appear really like you're dragging out the process, 'cause there is some real time costs that developers are experiencing. And you can, and I, I've seen the legislature can step in and mandate certain things to, on behalf of the development community. So, you just gotta be careful of this, always some kind of a trade-off there. The other thing I was gonna say is, I think this whole discussion about land use plan and rezoning, and how you link the two together, is something that's probably a, a good thing to address at this time as well. And I, I think, you know, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, or last meeting maybe, there's, there is, you know, the land use plan is the big picture policy, the zoning are the rules, and so, you wanna make sure they are linked together. And, you know, in some, for this, in lockstep, you know, at the same time of whether the plan precedes the zoning, but it's probably good to spell that out too, 'cause I know that we've had a couple of questions along those lines too.
I think it's okay. I think it's, we got something. To walk together, to have that option for applicants.
To do a land use plan and a zoning plan?
All at once, right? So, I wanna take this land, I wanna develop it into sheriff's substation, you know?
Okay, but I, I didn't, I wouldn't, I would not want to lock them together, for the simple fact that, um, you, you... Okay, what is the benefit to locking them together? I can see them going side by side, but I wouldn't want someone to walk in and say, "Here's my land use plan, and by the way, here's my zoning plan, and then we're gonna vote on it."
Well, what, what do you, what do you say to that?
If we change, if somebody comes in and they change a piece of property, you know, let's just say they're putting it in a higher system.
Okay.
And that was previously...
Residential.
Residential. When we change the zoning, that has to be done, does that then subsequently change it on the land use plan?
No.
No?
Not a bad way.
Okay.
It's not inconsistent, and if it's a step of inconsistency, it would be inconsistent.
Okay. But we don't change it then to make it consistent? Because I, I guess the thing I, I see is to not put the carriage before the horse. Like, I wouldn't go, changing the land use plan rapidly, because I think we put a lot of thought into changing the zoning, and so, you're gonna be changing the land use plan just because you're changing the zoning? Maybe we need to review it more, a little more frequently, about five years? And it would be tied to a CUP or a conditional zoning?
Yeah. Real, 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 real quickly, most folks concentrate on zoning. Traditionally, historically, 'cause historically zoning happened before you have a land use plan. But the state legislature about five or six years ago added this consistency statement requirement to local government, so that when your council takes action on a rezoning, there is a statement in there that says, "This action is or is not consistent with the land use plan or with the council's adopted comprehensive plan." And the reason was, they wanted to make sure that zoning, in a zoning decision at least, gave some consideration to the land use plan. Because that's, it's, the zoning is supposed to implement that plan, so.
Is there some weaknesses in our current, like glaring weaknesses in our current land use plan? Like, I'm not very...
It's fairly general, I, I mean, I wouldn't call them weaknesses, it's, 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 I, I wouldn't, no. I mean, I, I can't say anything that they're weaknesses.
It's not kind of like, that's...
Yeah, but, but I think the idea of linking the two together, go back to what you said, if Google wanted to come in here and put something, or like, or totally for that, the path now would be, well, first, I'd do a land use plan change, which means I wanna take 1,000 acres, change it to be one, whatever, for a hamster, so you can do anything with that. You can turn it around and resell it, and you're on, now you can do CUP for anything, right? Or you tie the two together, and you say, "We will change the land use plan if you zone it and have a CUP for this Google place," you know, and that's it. It's all, that's the only way of changing the plan, if it's according to the zoning that applies to what exactly your CUP is. Otherwise, we're not changing the plan, right? So, it really narrows it down to specify a change that we're allow, we're allowing to happen, and we're changing our plan to allow it to happen as well.
But if you change the land use plan, and then the person who has the zoning change decides, "Eh, I'm not gonna do that," or it goes out of business, or whatever, now you've got that property that was formerly R20, R40, whatever, now it's on the land use plan changed, so I think...
Yeah, it's zone, it's, it's deeded in a zone as one specific use. It can't change unless it gets another zoning CUP update. It can't, it simply can't. It's locked in that use.
Well, isn't the reason...
It might ask some problems.
Right, and, and you ask, and I brought some benefit of locking the plan and the zoning together. Well, it's like your chairman said, if you've got a condition request with a site plan of specific uses, then you, you don't have a pig and a poke. You know, it's more knowable what the substance of that land use plan is gonna be, because you've got that companion zoning, say, "Okay, I want, I want a commercial corner here." Well, the zoning is gonna tell you what specific commercial we're going there, so you have a better idea. And if you wanted to vote on the two together, okay. If you, if you just came through with a land use plan, just for a commercial, it could be anything, anything or...
I know, but again, though, what benefit would that be to the developer?
Speed, certainty, it improved typically, when somebody comes through with a land use plan or a zoning plan with a land use plan, it increases their chances, because they're being more transparent. They're telling the community, "This is what I'm gonna do."
But they could do the same thing with a zoning request, a CUP zoning request, without affecting the land use plan. Yes?
Theoretically, yes, but I'll tell you that I encourage people, if you're gonna come through zoning, you're gonna do a land use plan amendment as well. I, I just, I mean, I'm telling people that. I don't wanna just do a zoning and create inconsistencies with, between the zoning map and the land use plan.
That's why I think it's good to give that option to the procedure to tie it together. Yeah, well, I'm saying. It's, I mean, we can still deny it, doesn't stop us from denying it, but it gives them the option to apply.
To update the land use plan.
Correct, yeah. Now, if we're excusing David, Cheryl?
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yep, make a motion, excuse David.
I can, I can say him.
All right, I'll favor. I think David would joke about trees. Just the big one, just the big one. All right, um, so it's just a discussion, right? I'm in favor of linking the two together, just 'cause I think we have more clarity. I mean, for instance, the last one, right? Rather than saying it could be anything, it could have been specifically this. "I'm gonna show you my plan, this is what I'm asking for, and nothing else." If that was approved, nothing else would be built.
I, I wouldn't be in favor right now in linking the land use plan to a zoning plan when we haven't fixed the, the tree, the tree part or the conservation part, because that part of the zoning. You know, you understand what we do with them, we make everything as a CUP? We still have to have zoning, the rules that we still have to look into.
Yes, and if I could, if I could just jump in here, but what we're talking about here is just the process for amending the land use plan. That's kind of the discussion of this item right now. You're absolutely right, there are changes that will, you need to do to the zoning ordinance. Right now, there, there will always be some change, we're gonna be always tweaking the zoning ordinance, but what you're doing now is the process. And, you know, the, the subset of that discussion is how consistent you wanna have that change for the zoning ordinance, as well as the land use plan, and how to link those two. That's one thing, and from, you know, if I could, you're not gonna solve that tonight. If you, what I would say is, if you say, "Staff, think about that and come up with some solutions, some options, and present those to us as part of your text amendment proposal or your staff report." If you'd look into that, I would appreciate it. That, that would be good direction as a board.
I'm in favor of that.
So, you're in favor of...
Of him putting something together?
Sure, fine, under that, more information.
Right, any other discussion on that? No? Is that all, Tim?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to other business. Call up from March planning board. Finding decision form. Right, so we got a form? Uh, the goal is to use, utilize that, correct? Uh, when we pass something up to...
You have an example.
With, with me?
Yeah, then you have one right there. You have one from last week.
I don't have one from last week, no.
We have one, a lot?
A lot, yes. And Cheryl printed one up, right?
I've got one, I mean, I sent one to y'all.
Yeah, at the end of the night.
Yep. So, we all have anything today that we've voted on to send up to council for next meeting, right? The goal is to utilize that form. So, I asked Tim and Cheryl to include that in our packets, to make sure that anything... And we all have a form in our packets, right? We can pull it out, and we can all read and throw it out on the side of the...
So, we individually put down things on it, going to lead, or whatever you want?
Sure, it works, man, I think one form that we all agree to would work.
I think it works good if y'all can talk it out at the meeting, because rather than, there's always gonna be individual differences, where one person will write two pages, and another won't write two words. I think it's better if, if y'all sit there and go, "Okay, so the points are A, B, and C." Somebody can add D, but, you know, give, kinda give.
I think it's good.
It could not be too wordy, because council's not gonna word, read two words.
Bullet point.
What do we need to go through if you want?
Exactly. And I think, when I have a couple, Cheryl, I would envision having one of those decision sheets as part of the packet that we send out to you, so that, you know, it may help you to review and say, "Okay, these are my, these are my key points here."
Well, I want you all to come up with it, though.
Yes.
It's not me, it's not Tim.
It's me, but this is to help you kind of cheat sheet it as your review and stuff. I would see that sharing at the council, at your meeting here.
I can put it on the computer, and we can bring it up on the screen, so you can follow along as we write it.
Perfect, Kittle, don't.
It's gonna work out.
That would be, I like that idea. I think that's perfect. Okay. Truce Safe Organ Subcommittee.
Have we got any responses? I had one from you. I'm the only person that... I volunteer for three committees.
Three committees?
Three committees, yeah.
You're the only one that's...
I am the only one. You didn't?
I haven't signed anything online, but hopefully we do.
And I do have, like you said, some people from the community that are willing to help out.
And just keep in mind that our, our rules of procedure say only residents can be on committees.
But can they can come in as an advisor?
If anybody can talk to you.
If anybody can talk to you, you know, but for voting members, you know.
And one thing to note is, please be very cognitive of our staff's time that they get paid for. So just, just a suggestion is try and utilize any time that you have official meetings with staff there to use that to review or research anything, right? So hopefully, whatever meetings that you do are short, I'm going to imagine.
We cannot do any meetings until we get at least three people. At this point, you two cannot talk to each other about...
So, I mean, so Steph has to be at these focus meetings, at this meeting?
Somebody has to, we have to put notice out. I have to put it on the website. I have to put it on the door. We have to have agendas because this is special things. We have to have minutes of it. It, you're creating a whole body, which was, I was kind of hoping we could maybe keep it out of the formal realm and just let planning board do it. If you all want to talk to, you know, the forester or you come up with some other people that you have some information, planning board can do it at their meeting without going to all the extra steps.
The discussion can only be on tree safe, correct?
That's the scope that you gave, yeah.
Topic, the safety.
So at this, at this point, there is not a subcommittee to be involved?
I, you know, I know this is going to be a shock to you guys, but I don't mind being on the tree safe thing, you know? I don't have a problem with just trying to go through it and talking to people and coming back with suggestions. You know, coming back to that. I mean, if you don't want to have a committee per se...
That's good, you could do that.
I mean, I would check with, like, the developer. I would go sit down with the developer. I went and sat with Mr. Smith and got some of his ideas and just, and then I can come back and take them one at a time, and then maybe come back and let the planning board do the changes instead of committee.
I was pretty excited in our last planning board meeting discussion about really getting people from all different, you know, portions of the community. Whether it was a developer, whether it was a large landowner, whether it was someone from council, to get everyone, you know, to get a diverse feedback to help us. You know, because otherwise, this would be more skewed to, you know, certain peoples, what makes more sense to them, right? You know, what's more attractive to them. And it may not be comprehensive for the entire community. Which is, so I love that idea, the subcommittee. I thought that made a lot of sense specifically for this. You know, do that, go and get a lot of information. So the question is, if you go do some research and bring it back, can you get research from, you know, a developer? Can you get research from large landowners? You know, the same thing, and then small, maybe small landowners. Do you, differently, you know what I'm saying? Can you get diverse research and bring it back, the same as a subcommittee?
Well, I've got, um, there are people who've volunteered to sign up and come to these meetings. I mean, um...
Volunteer with you or Cheryl?
They need to lift a card, no.
No, 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 I'm just trying to get just interest, that's it. I'm not doing anything. I'm just trying to get interest, engage interest, and say, "Would you be interested in doing this?" I'm not doing anything official.
Since we don't have an official committee yet, at this point, why don't you go ahead and proceed and get whatever info you can do in the next month? And Sandy wants to do that also. If Michael wants to do that, if anybody wants to. The more information you bring back and share...
Can we interview somebody for a position, like a political job?
Can we still leave the subcommittee open?
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah.
Okay.
You can do an interview.
Let's leave the subcommittee open, right? And if we can get some interest enough to onboard by next planning board meeting, great.
Is there anything you want Tim to do?
No.
Good deal.
Picking chewed, trying to pick the right...
Not as it relates to this. Well, actually, you already have a, you already have an action item for tree safe ordinance. I already voted on that, so. Oh, they were asking if we wanted Tim to do anything. I said, "No, that doesn't, this applies to the subcommittee," although he already has an action item that relates to tree safe ordinance. And I was saying to the tree safe committee, the subcommittee, let's go ahead and leave that open. Right, so, and then we'll see at next meeting if you do have a quorum enough to format and to format the next planning board meeting. In the meantime, feel free to do more research, we'll discuss it. Shall we put this on our agenda for next meeting then, to discuss the tree safe ordinance?
Well, let me give you a suggestion to look at the Thalleys and Matthews already, the Marvin, the ones they have, and pull those and look at them and kind of do some comparisons and...
Okay.
I can do that, too.
That'd be good.
See what they change.
If you could, if you have the opportunity to provide us with any information for the planning board meeting?
Okay, sure. Can I do that, Cheryl? Can I send everybody an email?
Through the clerk.
You can send it to them, but just don't, you can't go back and forth. One way is, oh, I won't be going, I will be replying. Thank you.
I mean, for instance, we handed out tonight, for instance, right? We just talked about, let's say, let's put that in the ordinance. I don't think any of us read through it entirely.
Oh, no, of course not.
And also, let's go into motion for ordinance.
Well, they're going to be, yeah, they're going to have tokens.
Right, we'll just say, "Yeah, let's go." So anything, please bring, please bring it to us, you know, at least a week or so ahead of time. Okay, moving on. Planning staff report, including April Knight Village Councilman.
Just real quickly, at the council meeting, we talked about subdivision, conservation subdivision text amendment. They wanted to have some more information from what was given them, and so I'm going to try to rough up a couple real life examples of, find some parcels that are vacant in the jurisdiction, and do some rough sketching as to how they might develop under conventional subdivision versus how they might look under the provisions for the conservation subdivision. Try and get a feel for what these standards really would do in terms of the property. So I'll, I'm going to try to get that for their next meeting, and if interested, I'd be glad to share that information with you all as well. I know you've already kind of passed on it, but I'd be glad to share information that might be interesting.
Okay, we've referenced it, uh, in applying conservation subdivision rules or ordinances. Do you have the recommendations that we have somewhat that we made a couple years ago? With, like, the setbacks? I mean, we were very specific. We came up with huge...
Yeah. And I gave a lot of, the council, I gave all the history in what you all had presented versus the most recent council position on setbacks and all the other provisions and stuff.
One of the biggest thinking points, I think, was the sizes of lots. Your, your recommendations and councils were a bit far apart. But to get a feel, and we did the walking, you know, to all the different areas. I mean, if you really want to have the feel of a little bit of space left, you have to leave some lot size. And then people still chip away at that, even if they want to trade out the wetlands for space.
What I communicated to council, and I hope I did justice for planning board because that hasn't been going on for all time, was that I think, I told them that the feel that I had was that we didn't want to take too big of a leap, right? And maybe, you know, we get the conservation subdivision approved, maybe we adjust it down the road, but we didn't want to take too big of a leap first, which is why pretty much everything that we recommended was the way it was, was a conservative for conservation. So it was a conservative approach. And so I think they understood that. I hope that was what we were thinking.
You know, you did a good job.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Also, the council set public hearing dates for the Vermont administrative subdivision text amendment, and they also released the final $25,000 bond for Candela. You might recall they had reduced the bonds about four or five months ago, and the remaining amount was forced by site loss. Uh, I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. Has anyone else, anything else?
Yeah, the communicate, we were talking about, there's not been any response to the public input from the committee. A big thing is our communications committee, and we've also, one that's important, we also have the safety aspect. If we're not having any public input from folks, I mean, are we, when are we going to form these committees? And how are we going to do that?
The committees are formed, I mean, they've both been established. There is an existing committee and a charter for safety. There's no volunteers. I have one person on safety committee.
There's a volunteer.
I have...
Who's on safety committee?
I haven't gotten any, but...
Well, so I talked to Deb the last time, the last year. So I'm not even sure what I, it wasn't till today or yesterday, I was like, I think, but it was way down the website. I mean, because I go and I'm like, "Oh, this stuff at the top hasn't changed." I don't know, right? So I think it's a matter of those things where you're really looking for some public input.
I can try, but it's like everything's important. Early voting was important.
Trust me, I know.
Special meetings and stuff.
I'm just saying that, like, even me, I'm out there a lot, looking at the stock. Then I was like, "Oh, wow," you know, it's kind of, and I was, not a prospect, but I just didn't know it was.
I put it out to the list a couple times, and I'll put it out again.
So we're going to four jaw communicating, we need volunteers.
No, we need a communication.
I'll spend tomorrow going to her to do it.
Sign up. It's hard to get you to get a sign.
As long as it doesn't, as long as they're silent. Uh, so another thing, too, is, yeah, rules and procedures, right? We're going to have to be in our agenda next month.
Yes.
For us to review, so we should individually review them ourselves, right? And come prepared. So please, please do that. I think Cheryl, maybe you could, I was talking to Tim earlier, if you could help Cheryl and...
You all should have it in your books.
We have it.
You should have a hard copy.
The same way that you reviewed councils, right? And gave their recommendations. Uh, one thing I'm hoping is that we can have some synergy between the two, right? So...
Councils are much more involved. They have, it's 20 pages and it's all of the different motions they can make and stuff.
We'll just help if you would.
So what is it?
Help us with ours.
I don't think it will, that's what I'm saying, they're very different.
Okay. Okay.
Can I send it to you and you can take with it?
That'd be great, actually, yeah.
Of councils?
Councils, yeah. Is there anything else we want to put on next month's agenda?
More reasons of the committees again?
Yes, that'll be on the agenda. But you mean the, uh...
Oh, communications and the safety.
Those are planning boards or committees. Those are council or committees. Or committees.
Well, it says board.
What?
Committees or education for committees or just...
Oh, right, yeah, so committees, you know, those are all under council.
Safety.
Yep, communications, parks, all of them are under council. We have no, we have no discussion, vote, anything to do with that. We can, we're allowed to, you know, participate in one committee, I believe, is that right?
Two.
My department was two?
Two, and the way I do it is, like, if you're on planning board, then you can be on local committee.
Ah, it's a planning board.
Or if you want to be on safety and park and rent, that would be two committees.
So that's all over council.
The planning board is one, so we have one.
And then we form our own subcommittees, right? That's on, that's on us, that's all over us.
And the subcommittee won't last very long.
Right, it's one pass. So we will talk about our subcommittee next, next month. Uh, I would like to, you know, we should have the tree safe ordinance on our agenda next month for discussion, I think, right? Enlist with you during whatever you know there is.
If you have anything particularly you'd like to see from, for example, on your reasons as far as the tree safe community?
I don't have anything specific. I mean, there's so much. But that was, I think, that was the whole purpose. I mean, again, I want to give all this ownership to the subcommittee. I think that meant, I was so excited last month when you said this. I was jumping up and down, it's a great idea, let's get a lot of people involved and spend a lot of time and effort. Again, I'd hate it for all of us to put all this effort into it, only to hand it off and it's not complete, the subcommittees spend the next, you know, couple months working on it.
Because I've got at least five people that are interested, so...
Great, yeah, have a call, Cheryl. All right, anything else? Bring the council next one? Anything else, bring the planning board next one? Nope? Nope?
Cheryl did remind me that the council had asked me to look at, as part of the, kind of, part of the tangent of the discussion of the conservation subdivision, to look at what we use as the base for a lot in terms of calculating that lot yield. You know, what's, how many lots you get? Do we, if you do that normally, the ordinance talks about you exclude wetland, you exclude floodplain, that sort of thing. So they asked me to look at streets, to consider that and how we would, and, you know, as a way to exclude something else, another, another important feature to exclude.
Okay. All right, so one, one thing I brought up for that was, you know, hey, when you look at conservation subdivisions, right? Someone's going to give you that yield plan, and that yield plan doesn't take into account finances or cost. It's, money was no object. I could build 50 homes on those 80 acres. But when you take money into account, really, the developer might not be able to do 30 or 40 homes. But as you utilize that, money is no option, 50 homes to calculate the substance. So that is, one thing I just want to make sure everybody still considers, more look at the subdivision ordinance. I don't know how you're going to police that, you know, there is no way that I can think of, but it is something to consider. It is one of the potential downsides of this. It could get more of a yield than financially available. Right? Potential.
I think what John was referring to in a good example is if you have a piece of land and you have floodplain, and to get there, you have to build a bridge. Costs you a lot of money to build that bridge. So you say, "Oh, I'll skip that 10 acres and I'll just be a nice guy and make it common area, and aren't I great?" But for the computation, they could say, "Okay, I can do 30 houses here, and I can do 10 houses here. I'm never going to do one because I can't afford to."
Right.
But I can say I would have done them, and so now I can do 40 houses.
Isn't that part of the...
That was a great example.
Okay, what was the wetlands?
You have to cross the wetlands to get there, yeah.
If you have to cross them, okay.
Yeah, you have to build a bridge.
Money was no object. They could build a multimillion dollar bridge to two houses.
Yeah.
Now they can get two extra houses in their, in their yield. And they won't build a bridge, they won't do it. That's where your conservation land now, now they get two more houses in a smaller lot. So it's only a potential downside, so I brought that up to council. All right? Good, all right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion. Say that.
I'll say it.
You say that? I'll favor.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, man.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike, for coming in.
Sorry I came late.
That's all right.
I have a boy scout coming, they can do it all.
Oh![1789.54]